Session here, and the first council briefing will be from Deborah Bryant. Good afternoon. It's nice to see you not on this mic.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. I am happy to be back.
Welcome back.
Thank you. For as long as I will be back, we don't know right now. We'll find out. I'll tell you, the, I'll go to our first.
Now, Deborah, real quick before you get started, when you were doing your Zoom briefings with us, were we difficult to hear or see, or did we do OK?
No, I could see and hear you fine. Of course, the first one was a little rough because I couldn't see or hear you, so I know you were, oh, yeah, yes.
You did good as well.
It was obvious.
They, yes, right, hence the new General Assembly Building is, hopefully, we will be in it next year because right now, you know, we're just in a temporary kind of space, so there just is nowhere. Literally, you know, you just kind of find a corner wherever you are, so, but we may do. So, as you probably all know, on Saturday at about 4:00, the House and Senate both adjourned. However, the work on the budget isn't complete, and they couldn't come to a resolution, so they passed a resolution that they would be able to come back for the budget and then also for the remaining bills. We do not know when the next, when the special session will be, but we're hoping it will be soon. I thought it may be announced by now, but as of now, it's still not announced. The worst-case scenario would be, has to be finalized at least 48 hours before taking effect, which is July 1st, but hopefully, it will be much before then. So, there we go. OK, so just, it's just a quick of where we're at. We ended up with 3,143 bills that were introduced, and we still have 156 of them that are in conference committee that have to be figured out. I think there's only now probably, we're in the 50s, because some of them kind of either died or were duplicates, or it's very difficult to, because you don't figure out which one is now the leading contender to be passed. So, there still is work to do on both ends, on the budget and on some of the, some of the bills that are in conference. OK, just a quick recap to remember where we're at. The House still has, still, the House this year had a Republican majority of 52-48, and we had eight new delegates. They all put in a number of bills. The Senate has a Democratic majority of 21-19. There's been no new senators. The next election won't be until 2023. We failed on the, on the budget for right now. Items remaining in conference upon adjournment were 156, and then we're going to have a special session. Hopefully, we'll know soon. The governor's deadline is 30 days to sign veto or send back revisions or amendments to any of the legislation that is right now on his desk, which would be Monday, April 11th, and then our reconvene session will be Wednesday, April 27th. OK, there's a lot of issues of controversy that took up a lot of time, which could be why they didn't actually finish. But in any case, several of the things that you've probably heard on the news that were, took a long time on the Senate floor and the House floor was, one, the governor's appointments. Because there was a split in control in the two chambers, there was a lot of back and forth. The Senate Democrats came out against Governor Youngkin's selection for the Secretary of Natural Resources, Andrew Wheeler, and then in response, the House countered by withholding confirmation on former Governor Northam's pick prior to leaving office as far as the parole board. So, those two things took a really long time. What, what happened today is after, I believe it was Travis Voiles, who was previously the Deputy Secretary of Natural and Historic Resources. He's going to be the acting secretary, and Wheeler is going to be the advisor. So, that's still not exactly settled at the, at this point. Marijuana legislation, you know, last year's General Assembly session, there were pages and pages of all kinds of legislation that had various enactment dates. One of the things was by November of 2022, which would have been this year, there was an opt-out provision. There was a couple of things that this body would have had to have decided. All of that is dead now because there was a second enactment clause, and that was another center of debate. The Senate advanced a measure that would have allowed, there are existing medical dispensaries now, but they would have allowed for sale of recreational-use marijuana and, beginning in September. And the House had a few legislation pieces that were introduced as well, but none were docketed for hearing, so they all just kind of died before even getting started. So, back to marijuana, we'll probably see that come back next year. Another thing that was a large point of contention was the mask mandates. And as you know, the Governor Youngkin ended up signing a bill to make masks optional in schools. That was a big event that he had during the session. Parental empowerment, he also, there was a lot of discussion about a Youngkin-backed bill that gave parents the power to exempt their children from school assignments that involved sexually explicit material. Luring of a professional sports team, these were two high-profile measures, that and the creation of the lab schools. The Washington Commanders, there was a lot of discussion about luring them to Virginia, and Virginia, in the budget, they're giving them a $1 billion incentive and a cut of sales tax revenue if they do move to the state. The DC was the other area, but the mayor of DC said that they will not be countering that offer of Virginia's. The lab schools was something that Governor Youngkin was also trying to push, where they would partner with colleges and universities with K-12 schools to expand choice in Virginia, but right now, they're still at the 11th hour negotiations for money to temporarily fund this and have a handful of schools, so that's all still in controversy. And then, of course, one of the main things that you've heard about every week is tax relief. The tax cuts have been the main sticking point, particularly Governor Youngkin's signature effort to double the standard deduction on personal income taxes and to eliminate the state's tax on groceries. The Republican House passed a version of the budget that would do both, but the Democratic-controlled Senate preferred a study on the standard deduction issue for a year because of its long-term impact on revenue. So, that's still, we don't know what the final budget will show. And also, the Senate voted to eliminate the 1.5% portion of the grocery tax, but to leave the 1%, and that's kind of where that was left. OK, there's a couple of things that I just wanted to mention that we had identified in our weekly briefings that we were following. One was the repeal of the same-sex marriage prohibition, which, as you recall, passed in the 2021 session and needed to pass a second time, and that failed this year. So, that will have to start all over again and make it through two years. The eminent domain issues that came up, Senate Bill 666 and 694 were a big point of contention, and thank you to our city attorney, Mark Stiles, and his staff, especially Elizabeth Chupick and Becky Cooben, who were on the phone with me daily while I was in the meetings, trying really hard to get those in a place that worked for all of us. And I think we finally ended up with something good, or at least something that will not hurt things such as our strawberry festival and the Shamrock Marathon and those kinds of things, where we would have been liable for any type of lost access during any time period. So, we have a seven-day provision on, on those bills now. So, unless we change access for more than seven days, it's not compensable. And there was a couple other little things as far as temporary construction easements and knowing how long they were going to last, that have been put in the bills. So, I think we're in a pretty good place with that. Comp time for employees, if you recall, last year in the General Assembly session, there was the Virginia Overtime Wage Act that was put in place, and it had some unintended consequences in that it then made comp time, something that was important to some of our employees, especially in parks and rec and some seasonal things, illegal. It was fixed temporarily in the special Senate, special session budget last summer, but that was due to expire. So, the, now the Overtime Wage Act in Virginia was changed, and now it tracks the federal, which will now allow us to have comp time again. So, I think our HR department was very relieved about that. And then, you also know about Hampton Roads Transit, there was the $20 million for the retardation fees that was going to possibly go away, and all of those bills were defeated. So, that money will still come back to Hampton Roads Transit for all of our transportation needs. So, now getting to our legislative agenda. I think we, we did pretty well for some of them. We ended up with some good end results, not exactly what we had expected. The green checks are the ones that went through. Of course, our Board of Equalization increased members from three to four, went through the House and through the Senate, and was signed by the governor, so that's one. The second one are virtual meeting options for advisory boards and commissions. This was a big point of contention for a lot of cities, and the way it finally ended up, I think, is fine for us because I think we were only really looking to have more virtual options for advisory boards, commissions, more than, say, the school board or the city council. And many of the other jurisdictions felt that it didn't go far enough. But we did end up with some extra provisions so that advisory boards and commissions can meet 25% of the time or two meet, for two meetings a year or 25% of the time, whichever is more virtually if they need to. And then there's also some carve-outs for people who either live more than an hour away from wherever the venue is for the meeting or have a, some sort of infirmity or a family member that they take care of, that they can't leave the house, that they will be able to have some, some time that they can also do virtual meetings. The increase in the civil case filing fee to fund the law libraries, that one was defeated. We wanted to go from $4 to $7 as a maximum. We made a good argument that didn't have to be $7, but there was no appetite to, especially in the climate that we had with lowering taxes and things, to even allow anyone to have higher fees. So, there was really nothing we could, we could do about that one. We could certainly try, they said, you know, perhaps there'd be another way to get money to our law library, so that's one that within this year we'll have the libraries look at. The ability to access STR information for our short-term rentals. What we had asked for was something that Dana Harmer had written to make it not illegal for our, our Commissioner of the Revenue and Tax Assessor Tax Office to be able to share that information with us. We didn't exactly get that, but what we did get is a provision in another code section that says that instead of the accommodations intermediaries and sending the, their tax money to the state, they are going to send it directly to the city. And within that code section, it says when they do that, they have to give the city, not the, not the Commissioner of the Revenue, the city has to get a list of the name and the address of where the short-term rental is. So, in the end, it will give us the same information we were looking for, just in a different way. The civil penalties for repeated violations I have for blocking the sidewalk, that was our RAC question. They, the main sticking point on this one is that we were taking something that we normally would, say, prosecute under a criminal penalty, and we're making it civil. And there was absolutely no in the, with the Republican majority, they didn't want to take anything that had to do with reform of any criminal measures. Even with the explanation that this wasn't actually a criminal activity, it was just a criminal statute, and it was way to get to the end, they were not interested in taking anything and making something civil. We had a lot of people who also, from other jurisdictions, who discussed this as well and said that this was something they were interested in. The recommendation was to come back and see if there was another way for us to achieve this, and I actually have a meeting with the Rick next month, I believe it is coming up, where we can possibly discuss another way that they can get the same result. The FOIA exclusion for identity of nuisance complaints, I have a yellow on that because it didn't actually pass or fail. It was gently laid on the table with a letter sent to the FOIA Council to study it. And that was the bill that we asked for, for building code violations that we didn't have to give, there was an exemption in FOIA where we didn't have to give the name and contact information of the person, and so for this one, we wanted the ability, if someone complained about weeds or something like that, we also wanted to use the same FOIA exemption. Delegate Williams Graves did a fantastic job trying to convince them that this was something that, you know, would, would assist, but they, in the end, said that they were willing to send it to the FOIA Council for more study. So, we'll pick that one back up next year and see if there's a way that we can, we can get that. The replacement and preservation of trees during development, there were several bills on this, several of them failed, but in the end, we did get localities, God bless you. Localities will be giving, bless you, a little bit more ability to do that. It's a very complicated statute that we'll, we'll have to look at and figure out exactly how we do that, but in the end, we, we were able to get a little bit out of that. The ability to tap state broadband funding for the regional ring, you know, Senator, Delegate Glenn Davis put in a House bill for that, which the committee did not want to put that in a bill. They didn't want it in the, in the code sections because that would have been, there really is nothing in there now, so they wanted to keep it in the budget. So, that one was also laid on the table and put in the budget instead. In the budget, which isn't passed yet, so this is in the hopeful budget, there will be a provision that says that the next round, the money that's going to come through from the state that's already allocated and the money that will come through federally will be allowed for authorities for at least 10% of the amount that they have. So, what we'll have to do then is encourage the authorities and the authority that we belong to, the regional broadband authority, to apply for it. One, there's only going to be a special amount set aside for authorities, and two, we're getting the, the language changed from unserved, meaning you have to have no internet at all, to underserved, and hoping the definition of underserved will be broad enough to include, for instance, in Virginia Beach, you could have broadband service to your home, but it may not be adequate for you to work from home, plus have five of your children access from home, and that would be considered underserved. And then the last thing that will be allowed is middle mile, as opposed to just end mile. So, I believe, hopefully, if the budget works out the way we want it to, in the end, we will again get what we wanted to. The transportation revenue sharing program, it wasn't exactly the amount, you know, we had had this discussion when Alex was here about making it whole again and then adding on. This one, again, a little bit complicated, but basically, it's a step for this year, next year, and it will end up helping our public works to get where it needs to be. So, overall, here's kind of where we came out with our 11 things. We've got a lot of greens on there, two reds, and the yellow one is the one that's going to be going to the FOIA Council, and the white is because we do not know that was, if that's going to be in the budget or not, so that remains to be seen. Budget, I wish I had more information for you, but I can tell you that the House has $5.5 billion in tax cuts and rebates in its side, doubling the standard deduction, reducing the state rev, which, if they do end up doubling the standard deduction, it will reduce state revenues by $2 billion over two years. And the House also has in there's fully, full repeal of the 2.5% grocery and hygiene products. And the Senate, instead of doing any of those things, would like to punt it all and request a comprehensive study of tax policy for next year. I don't know, of course, we don't know where that's going to end up. I suspect it'll end up somewhere in the middle, but the House is, really wants to just go with as many tax rebates and relief as possible, and the Senate is afraid that if they do them all at once, it will cut services that residents need. So, that's kind of where there are, where they are with that. And thankfully, as I said, we'll, we'll reach a middle ground, and that's it.
Any questions? Rocky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, and I tell you, I, I want to appreciate your time in Richmond because I know how long it is, and those days become very long, and the weeks and the months are long, and I appreciate your work up there. But I want to draw back to, you said that the problem with the parole board. So, we currently don't have a parole board here in Virginia. So, my question is, and you may or may not know the answer, was there any conversation about how we get folks paroled that are worthy of parole and should be out of prison right now? How, how are we doing that minus a parole board? Was there any, was there any testimony on that?
Yes, so basically, with the three members, there is two members that were rolling off. There was one member that was still going to be there. One of the comments that was made was, well, you'd be happy if we have no parole board because then no one gets paroled. And so, that kind of was, that was an option. But the bottom line is then, if there is no parole board because of this process, then the governor gets to appoint one.
OK.
And, and that's kind of where they elected.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you.
Anybody else? Scotty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Debbie, I too want to thank you. I've been in your shoes, I've done, done that, your job for another public, non, private company, but a nonprofit, and it can be exciting every 10 minutes, every five or six days, but the rest of the time, it's a lot of hard work, and we appreciate it. Your meeting with Rick to talk about what we need to do to kind of try to revitalize the exemption for public display of goods, the misdemeanor problem, the criminal versus civil. I want to ask you about another, is marijuana. I'm very concerned that we're, the folks in the resort area are not getting all the information they really need to plan for the public, public use of marijuana and sales of marijuana. It's already an issue, as, as any, any city in Virginia will tell you. Maybe we need to talk about this offline, but I am very interested in knowing your recommendation for whether it's you or someone you recommend. I think the resort, the folks in the resort area need a very reliable source of information on the proposed statutory and regulatory scheme, including the nitty-gritty of that and actually, the folks that are going to be charged with enforcing it, what they think about it and how it's going to work. There are a lot of issues there that I think could affect our tourism industry, and I want to make sure it, it at least, hopefully, doesn't have a negative impact on us and may even have a positive impact. So, I'd like to talk with you, maybe offline about that, about making sure we're getting the very best and up-to-date advice on that for our industry.
I agree, and I would add, you know, there are, I believe, three committees at the state level now that are handling various areas of that, I would, you know, get that information for them, but also from all of that, the best controls we will have will be through our planning, planning and zoning. So, perhaps that's something also we should get Mr. Tahan involved in, to have a designee who would be.
Definitely part of the issue, right?
Who would be doing that.
OK, thanks again.
Very good.
Glenn Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. So, they're going to reconvene session on April 27th, and there's some issues, obviously, with the differences between the House and Senate on the budget that will affect us. So, it's going to be interesting how we do our budget process with an eye on the resolution.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, if I could clarify, the April 24th date is the reconvene session after this session when we get the budget. So, when the budget, we could be called back next week.
OK.
And so, at that point, we will have the budget, that's when it will go to then the governor, and he will have until, like, April 11th, do his, whatever it is he would like to do with it, send it back to us, and then the 27th will just be a one-day session where they will just have to agree to adopt it. So, there will be time within there where we can look at it before the governor makes any of his recommendations.
OK. Because there's some pretty stark differences, obviously, between the House and the Senate. And then, secondly, do you know if, once it is determined what the budget is going to be, and particularly when it comes to tax cuts and rebates, are they going to do some kind of analysis on what impact that has on the average citizen in terms of tax relief? Are they going to provide any kind of information on that?
Yes, and I believe they've already started that at different levels. For instance, there was some analysis of how much the grocery tax will impact, and it was something like 700 and change dollars per year per average citizen. They're doing the same thing with the gas tax, whether it be that they're going to give a reprieve, so they will do breakdowns. And I said the one that I, that I've gotten so far is the grocery tax one. Now, whether or not that is the entire 2.5% or whether that's just the 1.5% without the, the other, I know they're, the economists at VML, VACO, and they are all doing that as well. So, as soon as I get any of that information, I will let you know.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
OK, anybody else? John?
Well, first of all, thank you so much. This is the best service we have ever received from the General Assembly in all the years that I've served, so thank you for setting a new standard of providing us information in real time. That is certainly a new level of information. I do appreciate it. And I also want to make sure that we acknowledge that Barry Knight did a super job on the Appropriations Committee, you know, for, for us on a number of things, but also in backing the governor's proposal, and Senator DeStefan, Senator Keegan did the best they could do on the Senate side. So, I look, I look forward to great success, but I appreciate you keeping us real-time informed. Thank you very much.
Very welcome, and my pleasure and my honor. And I can tell you that Chairman Knight worked tirelessly. I was in his office many times, he was there seven in the morning, seven at night, and no matter what time I would come, he would always sit down with me, no matter what was going on, and talk. And so, he gave us as much time and energy as was needed. And he even met with myself and several others for some of the federal money that was going to be flowing through the state, not for this particular, but for what's coming ahead. So, he, he's been a very, very good advocate for us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Bryant, I just want to thank you on behalf of a grateful council for your stellar work up there. It's not easy. I tell you what, it's like trying to pick up mercury when you drop a thermometer, OK? But, you know, thank you very much and appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to do it. She's a rock star.
Remember playing with it in my hand?
OK, Mr. Rouse, I understand you asked for withdrawal from Dr. Harris?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, his, he got his flight, he got canceled, so he was unable to make it here in time for City Council, so he asked for us to get back on the schedule some.
Yeah, let's get him back on the schedule. You know, I've worked with him a number of years at Regent.
He speaks very highly of him.
He's a great guy. You know, very worth hearing. OK, if we can go on now to the City Manager Fiscal Relief Initiative, where, as Kevin and Vice Mayor Wilson and I thought it might be advantageous at this point to bring forward to the public right before we start getting into the budget about what we have done and what we are continuing to do. And in terms of a little preview of the state of the city tomorrow, we're going to be able to articulate a number of programs and things that we've been doing, not only to help businesses, but individuals and everything, so appreciate you coming forward.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as the mayor just said at the request of Vice Mayor and Mayor, the information I'm going to present today was included to City Council in a Friday packet item a few weeks ago as informational, related to a question that we had received. And so, in helping me gather this information, put together this presentation, I would like to thank Aviola Kazin. She's an intern. Go ahead, stand up, Aviola. Yep, she's interning with us from Regent University in her last semester of the MPA program, and I just really want to thank her. So, interestingly, she also used to be a geologist for Shell Petroleum. So, we have a Renaissance woman working in the budget office this time of year, so she's a huge help.
Did you say Regent MPA?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Dear to my heart, I was there 12 years.
Kevin, I think it's also important to acknowledge that the intern has had to take on a more hands-on role as part of the budget, as Kevin. on a more hands-on role as part of the budget, as Kevin is 50% without 50% vacancy in his office as well. So she's been taking a lot of work on in terms of helping us with the budget.
Definitely a intern that is learning by trial by fire. That is for sure. So anyways, I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank her. In putting this together also, you know, it was looking back over the series of action items City Council had taken over the last two years. It was two years ago, I believe this week, that I was presenting or working on a presentation of the FY '21 proposed budget, knowing full well it was dead on arrival. The pandemic had taken effect. And in looking back over this, it was basically looking at two years' worth of a bad dream that I think we all wish we could forget. But it certainly definitely highlights the amount of good work that the city did over the last two years to put forth a lot of relief initiatives for the community. So, without further ado, so the organization of this is going to be in the format of just that. So I'm going to lay out the information based on fiscal year in which the relief or the initiative put forward by City Council was initiated. So it really spanned three fiscal years. The pandemic began technically in FY '20 and City Council immediately took action at that point in time, also within the FY '21 budget and again within the current budget FY '22. In total, cumulative relief efforts to date is $105 million. There's an item in front of City Council today and should City Council provide, decide to provide additional relief through applying the fair market value to personal property bills, then that could be potentially another $38 million to add to that relief effort to date. Also acknowledging that this was available through multiple funding sources, a combination of which were local funds, CARES Act funds, and ARPA funds that came at a later point in time. So like I said, this really began in the fiscal year FY '20. And City Council, whenever the economy began to be shut down, City Council began redirecting local funds to try to provide relief towards businesses and those in need. So you can see here that through these two initiatives in council direction, $2.5 million of local funds were redirected to apply or provide small business grant relief as well as EDIP grant relief or assistance. With the adoption of the FY '21 operating budget and just before that, City Council continued that effort through the use of local funds with providing a meals tax holiday, which is estimated to have an impact of about $12 million of relief. In addition to that, City Council also made a decision to delay penalties and interest and personal property, restaurant meals tax, hotel tax, and some of the taxes that are to be provided and collected and provided to the city by businesses. With the adoption of the operating budget, City Council was also proactive in looking to provide personal property and real estate tax relief efforts. There was two programs, or there was a program put in place in which Human Services was attempting to administer the funds, identify eligible individuals who were experiencing economic hardship, and provide tax relief to those citizens that were determined to be eligible. Another program City Council put in place with the adoption of the operating budget was to provide utility tax relief. This was a combination of an effort between public utilities and human services, of which individuals that were identified as being in need could relieve, be provided assistant and relief in the utility bill. And then with the summer months and the approval of the CARES Act of the federal government, the city of Virginia Beach began receiving CARES Act allocations. So these were federal funds that were provided. And out of the gate initially, when City Council appropriated it, there were a couple of programs initiatives put into place. One was to provide $1.8 million in nonprofit relief and assistance. I recall that one very closely as my staff was working to review grant applications and administer those to eligible applicants. Something very challenging at that point in time was that the U.S. Treasury was writing the rules as they were telling us to spend the funds by a six-month period, within a six-month period. So it was very difficult to do that and also restrictive at the same time. We did that in combination with assistance from cultural affairs. Another administered, city administered program through use of CARES Act was a business relief, small business relief initiative, and that was administered by the Department of Economic Development. And again, that was trying to interpret the rules being laid out by the U.S. Treasury and imply those. In total, those efforts were 24, or excuse me, 21.4 million. Within the same year, the city received an additional allocation of CARES Act funding. In this time, there was a little bit more clear guidance from the U.S. Treasury in which the city was able to reimburse itself for eligible expenditures. In this instance, it was payroll, payroll costs. And City Council gave the clear direction that that was not to just hold the city harmless, but to turn around and provide as much as relief possible to the public. So that's why you'll see the source of these funds as being local funding and CARES Act, because the amount of funds that went out and was provided were basically general fund dollars that were free and clear of any strings associated with the federal spending. So cumulatively, you'll see that there were a lot of various actions that went towards the VB relief initiative. This was a partnership with United Way, Food Bank, Lisk, and the Workforce Council in which they partnered together and they accomplished about $28.8 million worth of relief efforts throughout the community. These ranged from providing additional food services to providing fiscal utility relief to household businesses, small business grants. And one, including one allocation was specifically carved out to focus on restaurant business relief. Two other standalone action items by council during last fiscal year was a, an attempt to provide special event fee reduction or relief to special events that were looking to come to the city during a really uncertain time and host events here. The City Council waived those fees for that year. And also in the same fiscal year, City Council provided additional business relief by suspending the ABC license tax for the calendar year FY '21. So in FY '22, City Council's initiatives really continued with the adoption of the FY '22 budget. So out of the gate with so much uncertainty in the economy, City Council decided to continue to provide relief efforts and reduce the real estate tax rate by 2.75 cents. This resulted in about $17 million of reduced tax burden to the businesses and residents of Virginia Beach. Also, about that same point in time, there was additional allocation from the federal government through the ARPA funds. City Council receive, or City Council calls, City received about $134 million in ARPA funding, of which City Council was very clear in their appropriation of that, that they wanted a good portion of that to go back towards the community and the businesses and residents in need. So again, turning to the playbook that we utilized with the CARES Act, we looked to partner with our regional nonprofit organizations that know best. And so through the partnership with United Way, as well as Lisk and the Food Bank, there's been allocations of the ARPA funds that have been provided to those organizations to help provide additional fiscal relief, more specifically the largest allocation to United Way for VB, their VB Thrive Initiative. So in total, through the use of ARPA funds, additional $30 million was provided for that purpose. And then to round it out, the last approval to date was for additional utility relief. And this is through a direct allocation of ARPA funds to the Department of Public Utilities in which they have $4 million to forgive basically accounts that have a balance and individuals don't have the ability to catch up and get ahead on that. They have the ability to work with those individuals to provide that level of relief. So in total, of the $105 million cumulative relief that's been provided to date over those three fiscal years, this is just a visual pie chart that shows what the allocation of those resources were. So you can see here that although the injection of federal funds through the use of CARES and ARPA funds were, you know, close to 30, 33%, the city of Virginia Beach through the allocation of local funds provided $38 million worth of relief. And so that's really above and beyond. And I can really say that, to the best of my knowledge, I'm not familiar with another locality that has provided this level of relief through the allocation of these funds or through local funding like the city of Virginia Beach has. So with that, really it's just, it's an informational presentation. I'll be glad to take any...
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Chatelier. I really appreciate your presentation and I want to thank the mayor and vice mayor for asking for requesting this briefing to kind of recap some of the activities that have occurred over the last two years. I don't really have a question, other than that I have a comment, because I really hope that this presentation and the delivery of relief through federal funds as well as through the use of local funds, as you pointed out, and even I didn't realize how substantial that was. I really hope this is a source of pride for the people who live in Virginia Beach as well as for our city generally. It is for me, because particularly as it relates to the partnerships with nonprofits for delivering relief, this was an innovative technique that Virginia Beach led the country on. And as a result, we were able to optimize efficiencies that exist within our nonprofit communities through organizations that are already proficient in providing the types of relief we were endeavoring to deliver. And so by forging those partnerships, we eliminated the red tape, we eliminated the barriers. The nonprofits were incredible partners by making, I heard the grant applications were the easiest that many of our partners had ever interfaced with. And, you know, that's, that really is something to be proud of, because we used these resources very wisely, very efficiently, and we delivered timely relief at a time when it was really needed. Could we have done better in certain areas? Sure. I'm sure we could do a whole, you know, debrief on that and think about areas where we, if we could do it over, we would have improved. But this is a moment, I think, to not necessarily celebrate, but at least to recognize the achievements that were made during the last two years, because I think it's something our city should be very proud of. And I'll, and I'll provide in conclusion, just a comparison, not going to name any names, but there are other cities, you know, our sister cities in the region who are still determining what to do with these funds. And, you know, I think we all know that when people are in need of relief as a result of a situation like this, they need immediate relief. So the notion that, you know, our partners in the region and around the country are just beginning to, I want to say they're just beginning, but they're, they still haven't appropriated these funds, they still haven't delivered them to the citizens, really speaks highly to the competency of your team. And I want to thank Mr. Duhany for that and as well for, for this council and for our community who came together to deliver this very effectively and efficiently in a timely manner. And I just want to thank you all and I'm really proud to have been part of this effort.
Hey, anybody else, John?
I want to dito remarks of Mr. Belushi relative to how well we did. And, but also to point out is that, you know, our society has the bottom 20%, the top 20% and the middle. And these programs helped a lot of people in the bottom, because of all the qualifications. But the people in the middle, not poor enough to get help, but not wealthy enough not to need help, we didn't, they didn't get much relief out of much of that. Though that shouldn't put aside what we did, because those people would have just went under. And I'm sure all of us would rather make, keep someone from drowning as long as we weren't drowning ourselves. But I think it also shows the leadership of this body, that when we put our mind to it, we can deliver on revenue-neutral real estate rates. And that to me just sets a foundation of what people should expect going forward as to what we do. And, and I think that we are even under more serious times today than we were with the pandemic in terms of people's purchasing power of their income. For those who were working, they managed that fairly well. I won't say great, but they could manage that. But no one can be managing the reduced purchasing power of double-digit inflation on food and energy and utilities. That's a corrosive purchasing power. So I hope that as we approach this budget cycle, we will be as equally ambitious and exceeding our past successes in terms of delivering broader-based tax relief. But we should take great pride. And I think, I've said this many times, no one should have asked us to come and testify before Congress and say, how did you do this? And we didn't keep the money to balance our books. We gave it to the people who needed it the most. And in today's environment, going into our budget, now everybody needs some kind of relief to compensate for double-digit gas prices, more so double-digit foods, and the tremendous increase in the assessments of their property. So I look forward to working with this body to repeat that great success. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? Yeah, let me just say, Kevin, and I think you hit on something. You know, I'm hard-pressed to find a city that came out COVID better than we did for a lot of reasons. And, you know, germane to what I'm going to be saying tomorrow at noon, not one person does this type of stuff. It takes a team, it takes a council, it takes a management staff and team, it takes, you know, people still working, but once again, you know, people working in the communities that are taking care of the elderly, that take care of the affirmed, and, you know, and just doing all the right things for the right reasons. And I think, you know, what Mr. Moss said was right, but, you know, it's what we're going to do going forward. And, you know, with the VB Hive and all the initiatives that we're going to have, we're trying to bring businesses here. And, you know, Mr. Belushi, you know, when you talk about the term point of pride, last year I was able to do 50, from what I'm told, 50 ribbon cuttings and grand openings of places during the height of the COVID. Our hotels had a banner year. We were able to be respite for a lot of families that lived and were in, you know, driving distance and come here and do things. You know, we were able to, even the year before, get our beaches open. And that took a lot of hard work and, you know, especially on the staff part, coming up with a plan, you know, that then the governor could live with. But once again, this was a total team concept and, you know, I think one of the confounding things is that, you know, a lot of people, you know, they didn't have to go to work over the last year or two and that labor continues to be, you know, a problem that we're going to have to address. But overall, I'll tell you what, it's, you know, I, I'm personally grateful for a council that came together and put together unanimous budgets and got the right things, the people at the right time. It was a combination of nonprofit, small businesses, individuals, utility, bill relief and things like that. Like I said, I'm not aware of too many cities that went to that magnitude like that. And I think that really accounts as the roadmap of how we came through this in a city. But the good news is, we are poised right now to go forward with business opportunities and, you know, I think everyone at this di is always had, you know, the saying, we want to provide, we want our kids staying in Virginia Beach when they graduate from, you know, school. And we're going to bring in those really good-paying jobs and diversify our economy and bolster it. But once again, I think it was an incredible team effort by the council, management, our city employees, and the people in our committee and the nonprofits that know their communities better than we ever can. People that are in the community know their communities and they were able to get things done. But once again, thanks again.
Good to you all.
Okay, Mr. Duhany.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Letitia Shelton, the city's finance director, will give you an update on our '21-'22 finances.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, City Council. I'm Letitia Shelton, the finance director, here to present the city's interim financial report through February. report through February. General funds revenue through February are 652 million and are 52% of the budget and exceeds the prior year by 65 million or 11%. Real estate, personal property, sales, meal and hotel taxes, all contribute to this increase during this period. General fund expenditures of 898 million or 64% of the FY '22 budget exceeds the prior year by 57 million. This slide chart before you depicts a two-year average for general fund actual revenues and expenses. As you can see, the actual revenues, the blue line, are 52% through February and are tracking 4% higher than the two-year average of 48%. The actual expenditures of 64%, the green line, are tracking 5% below the two-year average of 69%. Real estate taxes revenue is 308 million, which is 52% of the current year's budget and reflects an increase over prior year by 3 million. Personal property tax revenue is 28.3 million, which is 24% of the current year's budget and is over the prior year by 7.5 million. General sales taxes are 53.2 million, which is 73% of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by 6.4 million. Just as a reminder, sales taxes only two-month lag, so collections through February represents June through December sales. Restaurant meal tax revenue is 36.5 million, which is 91.6% of the current year's budget. Meal tax is also a one-month lag, so collections through February represent sales from, sales in June through January. Hotel room revenue is 7.8 million, which is 108% of the current year's budget and exceeds the prior year by 2.5 million. Hotel tax is also a one-month lag, so collections through February, too, also represents June through January. This slide depicts its representation of the salaries. So total cost through February is 279 million or 62% of the total budget, which is 22.3 million over the prior year. The total payroll costs represent 17 of 26 pay periods. That's pretty much my presentation.
Okay, short and succinct.
We're good financially.
All right, anybody, John?
One of the things I learned when we were looking at personal property taxes, when a tax is collected, is not a tax collected. So, and then I learned that personal property tax that's paid late after the year closes out is attributed to the current year as a collection. They don't go back and readjust the book. So of the amount that we've collected to date in real estate, how much of that is taxes collected from a prior year that were paid in this year and penalties on that tax, and how much of that really is on what we billed? And I'm sure, last time I checked, about 24% of our homes were owner-owned and they paid their taxes every six months. I don't know if that's still true, but that's the last number I recall. So I'm just curious, and I see that number up there, how much of that that was billed, payable on December 5th versus collected for prior years or penalties and interest was actually collected? That can come at a later date, but I'd like to know what we actually collected and what was billed, and I know it's different from that number.
Yes.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you a bunch, okay? Moving on.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Michael Kirschman, Director of Parks and Recreation, will provide council an update on an item that we want to bring before council for consideration at a later date.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson.
How you doing?
Members of council, Manager Duhany. Hopefully this will not take too long. This is relatively straightforward, and what we're aiming to do here is align the regulations at Little Island Park with the Oceanfront. So without further ado, do I have a clicker?
There's your clicker.
It was over there. Somebody spilled the clicker. Okay, so.
The Lieutenant Governor used her shoe.
Okay, so quickly, I'm sure you're all familiar with Little Island Park. In my opinion, a little piece of heaven here in Virginia Beach and one of my favorite places to go. So there's an aerial shot of it looking north to south. We have about a 2,000-foot of beach, we have the pier, we have playgrounds, we have large shelters that are extensively rented throughout the season, and a very large parking lot that's about to get expanded once again. And of course, just north, just south of that is Back Bay National Wildlife Refuge, and then on into North Carolina. Okay, there is what it looks like. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site. It gets very busy during the peak season. And what we discovered is that during peak season, of course, we have surfers, we have people that come to swim, but we also have people that come to fish from the beach. The issue has been that historically, we have asked people to fish towards the southern end of the property. We do have verbiage on our website that speaks to that. We have signage on site that says to move south from fishing pier, which is right here. We kind of reserve this for swimming, and we ask people to use any of this long stretch down to there to do any type of surf, fishing from the beach during the peak season. Of course, the beaches can get crowded. We don't want people throwing rods in when there's thousands of people swimming. However, it's come to our attention really that there is no formal ordinance to this effect. This has really been a department request and a best practice that we've tried to do over the years. The vast majority of the public, when and if they want to throw their rod in during the day, we say, "Can you move to the south?", and they do. The lifeguards will do that. The lifeguards are operated, of course, by EMS, the park staff by Parks and Recreation, and together we'll ask people to move. However, again, there is no formal ordinance. Technically, if somebody wanted to throw their rod in in the middle of the swimmers, there is no regulation that we could force them to move. This came to my attention last year. We did have a complaint where an older gentleman showed up with their grandchild, wanted to teach them how to fish from the beach, was asked to move further down, but due to mobility issues, did not want to move down. And so this, again, created a conflict. We had one, I found out after the fact, years ago in July 2017. So every few years, we have, it seems we have a complaint saying, "Well, I don't want to move to the south end." What we would like to do is, here is the current Oceanfront ordinances, which gives specific times to when people can fish from the beach and not fish. With city councils' concurrence, what we'd like to do is extend the ordinance, slightly tweak it from the Oceanfront, basically down to Little Island as well, which is on the Atlantic Ocean, same beach, just a couple miles down, down the shore. And working with the city's attorney's office, the new ordinance would read, if approved, unlawful to fish from the sand beaches at 42nd Street to Rudy Inlet and at Little Island Park from the northern property line bordering the Sanctuary condominiums southwards at 1,400 feet, basically towards the south end of the property, really the majority of the park, 1,400 feet down to the Back Bay line. This would be between certain hours during the weekdays and weekends during the resort season. The resort season was just moved up to there in the specific wording. Just so everybody knows as well, we also do have the all-terrain beach chairs for people who have mobility issues available at all times at Little Island, and we're always happy to assist with people if they need to get further down to the beach and can't quite get there on their own or need some assistance. So the same all-terrain beach chairs that we have at the Oceanfront, we have at Little Island as well. Again, this would just be one ordinance change that would move to that language and include Little Island Park. The other alternatives are to continue as is and let people fish right in the middle of the swimmers. We certainly don't recommend that. We don't think that is very safe for a lot of different reasons. We don't believe it's recommended to do a whole different set of guidelines for Little Island. We think we can just make them consistent with the Oceanfront, and it would work out just fine. Really what we're recommending is with city councils' concurrence to proceed with the recommended change. If so, we would come back in two weeks for public comment, and following the public comment period, two weeks after that, be requesting a vote by council so that we can implement this by peak season. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Got it. Michael, Rosemary, John, Louis.
Wow.
And a partridge in the pear tree.
Thank you, Mr. Grig... I just really had a question about the other oceanfront beaches, just, what are the rules regarding Croatan and Sandbridge?
They, as far as I know, there are really no specific rules there. However, we operate Little Island as a park, and we have staff there. The Oceanfront has lifeguards, and so it's possible to enforce rules, regulations, whereas when you look at Chick's Beach and Croatan Beach, there's no staff there at any time. And they're not as crowded, I would say, or create quite the conflicts that a Little Island Park and Oceanfront creates, just my personal opinion.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Kirschman. Could you go back to the slide? I don't know what number it is with the map, you know, the breakdown.
Yep.
There we go. So I'm sure you've thought this out, but I just wonder if you could provide insight into your calculations for the different ratios you used in your formulation here, because it seems to me, I visit that park sometimes, too, and it seems like that's a small space for swimming relative to the space for fishing. I know fishing takes more space and all that, and surfing. So I just wonder if that's enough room for people who just want to sunbathe and swim? Can you provide some thoughts?
It's a great question. Really, and Frank Menstrus is here as well. I think you all know Frank. He and the team at Parks and Landscape Services manage this park as well as the other parks. Really what we find is, the vast majority of swimmers always stay contained to this area. It is convenient with the access points to the parking lot, it is convenient to the restrooms, and really, this entire stretch stays wide open in terms of people not wanting to take their kids and lounge chairs and stuff kind of that far. But the fishers will walk down there, throw their rod in, and so even during peak season, we believe this is certainly adequate for swimming versus fishing.
Sorry, and one quick follow-up. Thank you. Is there any prohibition on swimming in the fishing area, assuming that council would adopt this ordinance? So in other words, the person, like, if no one was fishing?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
There is not. Technically, you could. We don't see it too often, because if there's five people lined up with rods, nobody wants to go swimming in there, because the lines disappear.
Technically, you could swim anytime, even if they were fishing?
Technically, you could. There'd be no prohibition, but what...
There is prohibition on fishing in the swimming area.
That's correct. That's correct.
Mr. Kirschman, if I could, Mr. Mayor, there is, isn't there restrictions on swimming so next to the bulkhead over there? I thought there were restrictions, you couldn't swim within a certain...
At the Oceanfront at Rudy Inlet? Yes, there are those. And there's also restrictions, you cannot swim so many feet from the fishing pier. So there to there, you cannot swim or surf as well.
Right.
Any projection of the water.
Right where the, I guess, the thousand-feet purple line is, the Rudy Inlet rocks is so, inlet is right there, isn't, there's a sign that says you can't swim so close to those rocks, right?
No, this is Little Island down in Sandbridge that we're looking at, not near the Oceanfront. But you are correct, near the inlet, you can't swim anywhere near the rock protrusions on the ocean.
Okay, good. Rosemary, then John, then Louis.
I'm sorry, I may be reading this wrong. To me, this is saying you can't fish at all between these hours from Back Bay to the Sanctuary.
You can't fish during those hours in this area.
Well, this says the property line bordering Back Bay Wildlife Refuge and the Sanctuary.
It shall be, it shall be unlawful to fish at Little Island Park from the northern property line bordering the Sanctuary condominiums southwards to, yes, so southwards to, so basically what it's saying is, let me go back, you can't fish from here, that's the Sanctuary, to here, and then here you can.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark.
I believe that's what it says.
Yes.
What it's intended to say.
Just want to make sure it's clear, and...
And there'll be a sign there at that mark.
We have a sign there at the mark, we have a sign at the entrance, we'll change our website to make that clear. Yes.
And I think that's, a good point was made, that the fishing area should be designated for fishing only.
It's not. We could, we typically have not done that, nor is it at the Oceanfront. So the Oceanfront outside these hours, outside these areas, technically, somebody could go jump in the ocean in front of a fisherman, but that would really, we haven't seen that happen, and that would be kind of intruding on somebody else's space where they got there first, and they're fishing there, and that's kind of their spot. But it's something that could be considered if council so desires.
And I'm sure getting the fish hackbooks out of you will...
I guess I live on the boardwalk, and we've got the bike path, and all these people that are using the bike path are using the boardwalk.
Yes.
It's very...
There's conflicts there.
There's definitely, and it's frustrating as well. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, John.
Well, those were two of the questions I had. So my only recommendation at this point was with the ordinance, because reading words, I hope that when it's online, or maybe when we adopt it, that a, you know, we have really great Google Maps, top view, side view, whatever view. It would be great that the ordinance certainly would have a pictorial attached to it, and online, it would definitely be able to give you the 3D look that those kind of applications today allow, so that people that want to go look or a lifeguard could say, "No, I can pull my phone, I can show you." I mean, I know that could, today, the phones are great, but having the visual of that would be very, very helpful.
Good idea. We can certainly do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Jones.
I'm curious, has anybody been hooked?
Not to my knowledge, although I don't think, the people that could ask that would be the lifeguards, because they'd be the ones probably responding. I don't know of any myself, that's not to say it hasn't happened.
That's not a magic Kodak moment we want to see.
No.
Okay, anyone else? Hey, Michael, you're doing a great job.
Great, thank you.
And I'll tell you what, you've got a big responsibility in a town full of 460,000 people, 500 square miles, and a bunch of parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, council discussions, initiatives, and comments. Anybody? Yeah, John?
The bikes, trailways, and waterways, they met yesterday. They'll be coming forward in the near future, giving their annual report, but there was a great briefing by the Public Works Department on all the transportation grants that are out there, and there was a nice visual in that. Patrick, that one thing might be a great slide to share with all councils. It was a comprehensive list of all the grants that are out there, and it was quite impressive. Hats off to all the people. This is just a general comment. I've mentioned before, you may recall when we had the Greenwich Road Apartments, and we rezoned industrial property to apartments, and I raised the question as to whether or not, since we talk about often here, we don't have enough land, don't have the right kind of land, and the kind of land we need for development is often industrial, and I questioned how that gets dealt with and how we make the trade-offs in our decision-making process and how the planning, how our planning staff considers that. We have another in the foregoing, in the upcoming future, another case where industrial property is being proposed to be converted to residential, which is taking us in the opposite direction of our long-term strategy. I've asked a number of questions of the staff, and I've asked, not today, but at a future date, that we get an opinion from our outstanding deputy city manager dealing with economic development, to make sure that we have a consistent thought process among ourselves as to how we plan to get there if we continue to convert, because the marketplace today is favoring residential development and return. You only have to, I don't know how many of you get solicitations in the mail, I know do, and on emails, to invest in apartments, look at the cash flow, and the rate of return is quite high. You know, do we want to, in this case, let the market drive our conversion process? Or do we really want to hold to the longer-term strategy, diversification or tax base? But we're going to continue to see this, and so we need to be thinking heavily about that in advance, and I've asked the staff to provide us some insight. Looking forward to things, I don't know how many people probably don't, at 5:30 in the morning, listen to commodity markets, but there are two big movements which will be affecting in the summer... affecting in the summer and fall to our consumers. One is the per-ton cost. This is raw delivery. This is not delivered to the farmer price. A year ago was $2.65 a ton. Today, it's over $800 a ton. One-third of all the exportable grain comes from Ukraine. They're not planting grain, wheat. So those are issues coming downstream. If Ms. Henley was here, I'm sure if they're planting wheat, they'd be glad, because wheat is up 66% per bushel over a year ago. So these are prices working through the commodity markets into the retail consumer, and there's a three- to six-month delay. So as we look at the budget process, we have to be thinking ahead to not only the financial stress our households are facing today, but what they're going to be facing in six months. And there really isn't any mitigation that the private market can do about those price increases. So I'm just making people mindful that the inflationary pressures that we see are far from over, and we're working ourselves towards by the artificially suppressed inflation rate of the federal government of 10% for the year. And that's, and that is tremendously taking out energy, taking out food. And the water realtors had a publication, which you may have seen, Ms. Wilson, that the average rents for a single-bedroom apartment in the region, year over year, that was January '22 over January '21, was 18% was the average rate increase. So these are all pressures that folks are under, and I think we need to make sure that we're taking this into consideration as we make the many decisions that face us. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Wilson, and then Mr. Wooten.
Well, pleased to announce that the Southeast Network Authority, our broadband ring, has signed the contract to actually build it and start construction. We initially, Cox Communications had initially won the bid. However, they decided not to go through with it. So Daniella is going to be building it for $24.5 million. So hopefully, we can get some of that money also that Debbie talked about in the state budget this year, which would be 10%, but 10% of $24 million is still a significant amount of money. But it's very exciting. It's moving forward. This is going to be super ultra-fast broadband, which is going to also help us with budget, too, because we'll be able to utilize it for our city. And it'll save us a lot of money for all of our communication needs as far as broadband's concerned, but also, you know, bring in industry and jobs. So this is an exciting time for us.
Thank you. Ms. Wooten?
Yes. Thank you. I want to bring up two items. The first one has been placed at your desk. It's a substitute version for K6 that will be coming up on our agenda. Like you, I received many calls and emails regarding the terms gun violence. And as you know, there is another resolution that will be before us tonight for a permanent memorial for DeShayla Harris, who was, her life was tragically lost May 26 during a mass shooting at the oceanfront. And so out of that, and the presentation that was given on February 22, where she came and spoke and relayed her request to you, I understand there was some feedback that there should be an acknowledgement of other individuals, innocent victims who lost their life through gun violence. Hence, the resolution that I set forth for a separate memorial for gun violence victims. Well, after presenting both of those resolutions, there were residents in the community and groups who reached out and wanted the removal of gun violence. Now, because of those concerns, I submitted a substitute version which removes gun violence and expands the resolution to include people who have lost their lives prematurely, whether through as innocent victims of violence, through COVID-19, car crash, or any other ways that they've lost their life. And they request, or their families request that they be remembered. That resolution will replace the K6. And also, people who have lost their lives through gun violence will be recognized through that resolution as well, if council sees fit to approve it. And so just want to make sure my colleagues have that information. Happy to talk about it a bit more if you would like to. But if you notice in the resolution, it also talks about starting a website that, where names appear for victims. And then perhaps moving forward with planting trees for victims throughout the city in different places, which will be good for the environment. So tried to come up with some creativity here. However, in any event, whatever we come up with has to be approved by council. Would also require your input, and so it's not something that will be done without your input and without your approval. So that's the first item that I have. On a lighter note, I was hosting, or it was a pleasure to host, our first pitch competition on Saturday, the 12th, at the Virginia Beach Convention Center, where we had nine teams compete before five judges. The item that they were competing for, or the award, was for mentorship and a networking package from the Hive in the center, or in Virginia Beach at Town Center, from the Hive Center. And so the teams performed in an outstanding manner. We had three teams from the Kempsville Entrepreneur Academy. They did very well. Two of the winners came from the academy. The first winner, first-place winner was World Play. The second-place winner was Swag Stick. And we also had other individuals throughout the city who had wonderful ideas and concepts, and also businesses that they presented. Very awe-aspiring, the feedback that I received. And it is potential that as we move forward in the future, our young people, young adults will want to stay here, because they have opportunities like this to pitch their idea, to pursue their business dreams and goals right here in our city. And so that, the forum that was provided for them on the 12th was certainly an arena and a forum to do so. One of our guest judges was Dr. Angela Reddicks. She was very taken back by some of the teams who performed, and she certainly wants to help a lot of them, and as she reached out to me to let me know. And so just an excellent opportunity for our city to shine, to provide a forum for our young adults to present their ideas. And so I'm really looking forward to the future of how great we can continue to provide opportunities for entrepreneurs and young adults. And I would say, in talking with young adults throughout the city, one of the things they do say to me is, you know, Ms. Wooten, I would stay here if I had a forum to pursue my aspirational goals as an entrepreneur or a business owner. And so I'm very hopeful that Virginia Beach is and will be that city to help our young adults do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bullici, and then Mr. Tower.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I wasn't really planning on making a report today, but something did come to my mind that I think is worth sharing, I think is kind of neat. And that is, after many years of a hiatus, the World 1000 Catamaran Race, which is an iconic race that goes from Fort Lauderdale to Virginia Beach, an offshore sailing race, is coming back. It's going to come back to Virginia Beach in May. And I think it's a really exciting opportunity. The catamarans, for those of us who grew up here, are iconic to Virginia Beach. In some ways, they sort of reflect our seaside culture and heritage. And for me, the World 1000 is important, because my godfather, who lost his life tragically in a plane crash in the 80s, was a champion, was a winner of the World 1000. His name was Ron Anthony. And I'm really proud of his accomplishments, and I'm proud of the opportunity that our city has to welcome back the World 1000, not only for the impact that it'll have on hotels and restaurants and our economy, but on our recreational culture and seaside culture and coastal culture in Virginia Beach. So welcome back, World 1000.
Guy.
Speaking of welcoming back, and I hope I'm not stepping on any announcement you were going to make, Mr. Mayor, but I'm so pleased to look and see that the Oceana Air Show is returning this fall. And not only that, they're bringing the Blue Angels with them. And the Blue Angels are now flying the F-18.
Super.
Super F, Super F-18Es, or the?
Yes.
That, on the flight line at Oceana, it's expected it'll bring a quarter of a million or more people to our city in September of this year. The Blue Angels haven't been here. We haven't had an airshow in a couple of years, and the Blue Angels haven't been here since 2018, I believe. So this is very exciting news, and I'm happy, I'm privileged to have the Oceana Naval Air Station in my district, and I'm really happy to tell the public that it's coming back.
They're back. Ms. Henley?
Well, I apologize for being late to the meeting, but previously scheduled for today was the time when the folks from Virginia Tech were to come and meet with our engineers this morning to coordinate the work that they're doing with our forestry and flooding study, with what we are doing with our stormwater modeling and so forth. And I understand they had a very profitable morning, but then for the afternoon, their meeting with the group of partners who have come together to have all of this study done, the folks from Nature Conservancy, and the Department of Forestry, and Lynn Haven River Now, and so forth. And I really wanted to hear Dr. McLaughlin give his up-to-date presentation, and so I took off a few minutes from here to go over there and hear that. Of course, this is a study that started three years ago, and they did the phase one and made that report. And phase two was supposed to have been done last year, but with the pandemic and not being able to get the graduate students that he needed to do it, he was not able to finish it. But they are working on it this year and expect to have it delivered complete by the fall. But of course, this whole idea of forest as a part of flood reduction, I think is something that we've been talking about, and we've talked about it a good bit now with our return of our open space program, that possibly having is one of its primary processes to help in flood reduction. Of course, this study is based on quantifying the amount of water that's stored and lost in forest versus other land types. And there are different types of forests, too. And the intent of this phase two is to let us know which patches of forest provide the greatest amount of benefit. So if we do get into acquiring properties, we will know which ones are the ones that are really going to do the benefit that we want to do with forestry. Just one of the things that I think is a great takeaway in the very basic analysis of what we have, is that forests cover 29% of the city's land area. That's pretty good for a city of our size. But the forests remove 46% of its water via evapotranspiration. And it's this type of evapotranspiration, in addition to the other things that we think about with forests, that we're really calculating with this. And the unique thing is that this work is giving us the science, so that we can tell you exactly how much water a particular patch is going to be able to take out of the process for us. We can already do that with a web tool that they created with the phase one, and this is all going to be refined quite a lot with what they're doing in phase two, so that we can really quantify the reduction rate and the data with the storage models, and working it with the SWIM models and so forth, is what they're coordinating now, so that what is going to come from this is going to fit right in with our modeling and so forth. So we're going to be able to look at a patch of forest, and we say, if we take that forest out, what is going to be the loss? It's not going to be just a, we think it will, or it probably will, but we'll be able to know. And I think this is just this fantastic data that we're going to be getting, or that we are getting out of this work, and the folks at Virginia Tech who are working on it are really, it's such a valuable thing for us individually, but also knowing that this data can not exactly be transferred to another locality, because it's all going to depend on each locality's dynamics. But the data and the process will be able to be transferred to other places as well. And they have already been reported in some of the publications, national publications, and they make sure that Virginia Beach is right there, so that everybody will know that Virginia Beach is doing this kind of work. And I think it's really fantastic to know that we're going to be having this in a few short months, and we'll be able to put it to good work, I hope, with some of our future acquisitions.
Thank you, Ms. Henley. That is very good news. Aaron, and then John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How about them hokies, huh?
Yes.
Serving all the way around in all capacities as well. Mr. Mayor, I know there's been quite an announcement on my future concerning, on this body, but I only feel it's right that we get to the people's business first. And at the end of the night, I prepared a statement, if you will.
Yeah, we can do that during a new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, Vice Mayor Wilson brought up something that I thought was important, and it's that the oceanfront considering bike lanes and bike paths. As you know, tourist season is right here on the coast, starting very, very soon. I think we got to kind of highlight our bike path. As an avid, you know, bike rider, there are people constantly walking into bike path all the times, and there are many conflicts. So Michael Kirshman, you're very good at really finding those solutions. But I think if we could add a new strip of paint down there, it'd do wonders, just to kind of let people know they're on the bike path. And last but not least, it's Councilman Tower who stated, I'm really excited that the airshow is returning. Since a kid, I haven't missed an airshow here in Virginia Beach. And the past couple of years that we've missed it, the Thunderbirds, the F-15, the Air Force F-16 Fighting Falcons, but referred to as the Vipers were here, and they put on quite a show as well. But I'm looking forward to the Oceana Air Show coming back, and seeing the F-22 demo team is one of my favorites, and I can't wait. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. John?
I wanted to pick up on Mrs. Henley's comments, only because it's something that Louis and I know for our own neighborhood, I think many of you know the 1632 All-Donation Episcopal Church there on Witched Up Road, had a, probably trees that went back to the foundation lane of the actual church, and to meet the stormwater management regulations that now exist. Those considerations of what those trees offered and did were cut down to make way for something that is probably not as effective as the trees, and certainly, it's not as aesthetic pleasing, I can assure you. So hopefully, from that good work, we won't find ourselves repeating those kind of, meet the letter of the law, but was not the smartest answer, but where we were, and the rules we had to enforce. But I look forward to getting better science for better rules.
If I can just comment, we have certainly offered our data with the General Assembly, considering all of these tree things. And, you know, I don't know why it's so difficult, but clearly, with this second phase that we're doing, we're going to be able to show what the benefit is. And we're hoping that the value of the tree can help to offset some of what is otherwise being required. So I think this has a tremendous amount of applicability throughout all of this, and I think it's going to be something that we'll be able to use in many different ways. I mentioned the open space, but I think in other ways as well, it's going to give us that real data. And I think that's what is so important, particularly if we're going to ever convince folks that we need to be able to be a little bit more flexible sometimes with what's on that lot.
Anybody else? Okay, Limwood.
Guy, did you have something?
No, I was just going to add the, one more comment on the Oceana Air Show. As part of that, I believe the STEM, student STEM production exhibition, with a lot of STEM exhibits by and for students, is also going to be. by and for students is also going to be robotics and the like. I think it's also going to be a part of that.
Great, Linwood.
Well, since we're mentioning air shows and World 1000s, we've got to mention the Shamrock Marathon also. Jerry and Amy Frostick do a great job. And looking forward to a great event this year. Their 50th anniversary this year.
Yep, and we welcome them back, too. Anybody else? Yeah, I just got a couple of quick things. Speaking of the Oceana Show, and Guy and Aaron, I want to thank you for your comments. Had the pleasure attending the news conference this morning, you know, with Captain Holmes. And the real point I want to make out, I think you articulated very well the importance of Oceana, how complimentary Captain Holmes was, not only to the city, but particularly this body, on how we work with the Navy. And I think that's, once again, another example of how our resilience and tenacity as a city, and you'll be hearing that tomorrow a couple of times, you know, on how, you know, we made it through. And but, once again, let me just bring up another thing. Our Surf, East Coast Surf Championships. We, two years ago, when we, the world was in a shutdown, we had the only surf competition in the world. Okay, they did it virtually. There weren't that many people actually on the beach. The spacing was there. But it was officially endorsed surf competition to the point is, we now have the world record for surfing competition. And that was taken notice by the folks at Van Shoes, who is a big sponsor of these events. Well, this year, you know, we're all proud to announce that the World Surf League, which is the international surf communication, the top professional surfers in the world are going to be performing at the East Coast Surfing Championship. And once again, bringing back the Shamrock, bringing back the Neptune Festival. Right now, we are in the version of being a version of the Comeback Kids right here in Virginia Beach. We're coming back stronger and a lot better, and really better. And I'll tell you once again, I can't underscore the hard work so many people, this body, this government and the community, put in to get us through some of the darkest times in the history of America. Okay, thank you. All right. Madam Vice Mayor, if we could do the consent.
Okay, under ordinance resolutions, 1A and B, we have speakers, so we will be pulling that. Number 2A and B, can that go on consent or?
Are we okay with number 2 on consent? Good for consent.
Number 3, to refer to the Planning Commission about tattoo parlors and body piercing.
Good for consent.
Number 4, the revol, the resolution to revise the membership of the 531 Memorial Committee. Everybody okay with that?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, if it's okay, I could just make a quick comment on number 3.
Sure.
Yeah.
I, I agree with, with adding it to consent. But I did hear from someone who's in the industry yesterday who expressed some, I wouldn't say concern, some, offered some feedback about that. So, I just, I think it's, all we're doing here is sending it to Planning.
Yes.
And we'll have lots of time for engagement from the industry and every other stakeholder. And I just want to offer that clarification because this is, just for more discussion.
For clarification, Mike, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't hear. You're referring to item K-3, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, yeah, I was, I want to echo the same sentiment.
It's just going to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, John.
Since we're at a pause, I wasn't going to break your rhythm there, Vice Mayor. I think that 1A could go on the consent agenda. I'm just withdrawing, and I sent you all a letter. I don't need why we need a separate vote.
Well.
Because you can still, the issue is, we're voting, going to vote on B. I guess you have enough speakers to speak on both? I guess, okay, I was just trying to look for a way.
Do we have the multiple speakers?
We do, yes.
Okay, well, we can do a combined motion then.
Maybe we can do it combined.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, and number 4, all right. Number 5 and 6, we have speakers, so we'll put that, we'll be pulling that. Number 7, to the franchise agreements. Everybody okay with the franchise agreements? A through Q. Okay, number 8, the ordinance to change and reordain the city code for the polling place at Landstown. Everybody okay? Number 9, to approve the assignment of the franchise operation and maintenance of the Virginia Beach fishing pier. Everybody okay with that? Okay, number 10, the resolution to authorize the city manager, Citi Kirk, to place an advertisement regarding various permit inspection regarding increases as part of the 2223 budget process.
I'm voting no, and this is why. I have communicated to the staff. We have lots of summary information of what, you know, how much we're increasing the fees. It's been in place since 2004. It represents a 66% increase or 3.7% per year. There's no explanation of why all of a sudden it has to go up 66%. So, I don't know what the public is going to get the comment on. But if we're going to advertise something and say it's ready to be advertised, then I think this body should know what reasoning we're giving to the public for increasing it and why, after 18 years of no increase, what happened in those 18 years of no increase? And why all of a sudden it's 66%? So, I don't know what the public's going to get in terms, because you can't comment on nothing. And so, I'm voting no, because I don't know what the public's going to get. And how do you advertise if the public isn't being provided something to comment on other than to price one up? So, I just don't think that's fair to the public. So, I'm voting no.
How about everybody else?
Everybody else okay?
All right, number 11, the authori, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments and deportation of the city-owned property. There's A, known as Bass Enlet. Everybody okay with that? That's Princess Anne Barbara. And the other one is Treasure Canal, which is Lynn Haven. Mr. Branch, you okay with that?
Yes.
Number 12, the ordinance to extend the sunset date to April 5 for residential parking in the historic Cavill Shores neighborhood. And that's for four hours, I believe, because I looked at it. Mr. Tower.
I'm sorry, I was looking at.
Cavill Shores.
Oh, that's mine, yeah. I'm fine with consent on that.
You said that with such enthusiasm, Guy.
Last year, we changed it from three hours to four hours so the people could have been there longer at the beach. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's status quo.
Okay, number 13, the ordinance to accept 15,604 from the Virginia Aquarium Foundation to the Capital Project. Everybody okay with that?
Can you open the public hearing on planning?
The only one that is on, is pulled is number 9, by the way. And that's going to be in favor. So, number 1, 1252 Jensen Street, and that is Beach District. Mr. Tower.
Yeah, can I ask a question of Mr. DeHaan before?
Yeah.
Bobby, I, I was, had a Sea-Tac Civic League meeting last night. And the two concerns that were expressed about this, I just want to make sure they're in here. One was the, there's apparently originally a request for an entry on Bird Neck. It's a road that's now been changed, so the entry's only on Jensen. Is that correct?
The truck traffic, the, the delivery traffic can only come in from Jensen. There is access proposed on Bird Neck, but it's only for the parking for customers.
Okay, I think that's, that was my issue.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, number 2, Whitney Triplein Pass, James Pass and Whitney Triplein Pass, Kempsville. Okay, number 3, N3 Property Advisors, Virginia Beach Investment Company, Auto Repair, and that is Centerville. You can place it on consent. Thank you. Thank you. Number 4, NMP-C4 Fairfield SC LLC, conditional use permit for a mini warehouse, and that is Kempsville. Danielle Good and Cynthia Schott in Bieler Lakes for a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor, and that is in Rose Hall.
Okay, for consent, thank you.
Michael, you got all the tattoo parlors going on.
That's why we're sending it to the Planning Commission.
And I don't have any yet.
Yeah, come to Rose Hall, get a tattoo.
Number 6, Elenia Wesley, Alvin and Cynthia, Ally Wesley, for conditional use permit, Residential Kennel, Whitechapel Court, and that is in Bayside.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers signed up?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay, I'm fine then.
It's also in the 9th District, and I do have some thoughts.
Okay.
First of all, I've been by this place several times in the evenings. And I've called Bobby DeHaan and shared some of them with him. So, to document where these dogs, one, have been outside. I don't know how many, you can't see through the fence, but they're barking at night for long periods of time, like 25 minutes, at least one instance. So, I, also, they're having this particular place so they, for a short time, because she plans to get rid of these dogs. And so, I think it should be for a period of one year to make sure that the dogs transition off the property. I've also walked around and spoke to the neighbors, especially the adjacent neighbor, that's the drum I told you about that was in the wheelchair. So, I think one year is plenty of time to get, to get the dogs down below the kennel number, which is why she's applying. So, I would like to see that what the applicant's here, they would agree to that one year conditional use permit in light of what we're trying to solve as a short-term problem, not a long-term kennel situation.
You want to work that out ahead of time, or do you want to pull it?
Well, well, I don't think of working it out ahead of time. But if not, I would want to pull it so we could get it worked out. So, I'd leave that to see if, with the applicant. But I, I have monitored that property, and there is a dog barking problem.
Mr. Moss brought up a, a point that we, we don't have the new districts in here like we had been having.
What did say, it did say in here.
It says District 4, Bayside.
But the same thing says, I think it says District 9, formerly District 4, Bayside, I think is what mine says.
Okay, mine says formerly District 4, Bayside.
Okay, well, mine does too, but it says District 9, anyway.
Right before that, before the princey, it says District 9.
By the way, you know, council member requested.
When it came up at the Planning Commission, was there any discussion as to how long it was going to take them to get it down to the four dogs?
There was not, but the applicant has five personal dogs, which is over the number as well. So, I don't know if they'll be agreeable. I will have to ask the applicant if they'll be agreeable.
I've got it pulled. All right, number 7, Tandang Regency Hilltop Associate, conditional use for a tattoo parlor, Alaskan Road, Mr. Tower.
No problem with that.
Okay, and number 8, CNC Development Company for conditional use permit, short-term rentals, 22nd Street, A and B, Mr. Tower.
I'm happy to have that on the consent agenda as well.
Okay, and number 9, we've pulled, and it's, their speaker is in favor.
Number 9 is just the applicant signed up, I believe, right there.
Yeah, yeah. And that's it.
All right, thank you. All righty, moving on, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.237 11A. Code of Virginia is mended for the following proposals, purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefing staff, members, or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 7. And that's pertaining to the city of Virginia Beach versus WC Capital. Legal matters, consultation with legal counseling employed or retained by a public body regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 8. Recycling contract, public contract, discussion of award of public contract involving the expenditures of public funds and discussions of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 29, Atlantic Park. And prospective business or industry discussions concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interests in locating or expanding its facilities in the community pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 5. And that's Project Coastal and Project Sign. And then finally, personnel matters, discussion considerations or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237 11A 1. And that would be council appointees, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, the votes are open.
Five vote of 11 is due, you recessed to closed session.
Okay, we are now recessed into executive.